So, welcome to the Town of Richmond Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, February 1st. Looks like we have a quorum of commissioners, so we can get the meeting started. We don't have anyone here in the town offices with us, just myself, and my name tag is missing, but I'm Virginia Clark, if anybody is wondering, and we have Duncan Wardwell, who's the assistant to town manager, who's helping us this evening. So, great. We'll start by looking at the agenda, making any adjustments. We have one main item on the agenda, which is to review the amendments to these two mixed-use districts that we've been working on, and hopefully we can get them over to the Select Board pretty soon. It's time. So that is our agenda. If anyone wants to make any adjustments to that, this would be a good time to do it. Hearing none, we'll proceed with that agenda. I'm assuming that the guests we have on the Zoom call are interested in those items. If they wish to make any comments to other items not on the agenda, this would be a good time. Okay, hearing none, we'll move on. And we will look at the minutes of the January 18th, 2023 meeting, our last meeting. Does anyone have any corrections or comments, additions that you'd like to make to those minutes? Okay, hearing none, we'll accept those minutes into the record as they are written. And move on to item number five on our agenda, which is our main purpose of being here this evening. We're going to look at some items that we had left unresolved from our last meeting. And any final comments that people have on this work that's in progress? So, I think I'll start. I'm hoping everyone has looked at the memo, which was my list of unresolved issues that we had said we were going to talk about further. And of course, all of these items relate to the document called Gateway and Village RC and Associated Amendments. This is like a clean copy of just the amendments that we're proposing. We also have a full zoning regulation markup in this package, so if people want to look at the markup form, then that's available too. So the items that I had on my list that we could look at first, we had in section 3.3.5B, the language significantly remodel. The attorney's comments had suggested that we should have a definition for significant remodel, and he suggested meaning more than 50% of the area in square feet of the structure's facade and the building walls are to be changed by the remodel. And I thought about it. We had some suggestions as to using the value, which is used by FEMA and some of the other processes. This really relates to the way the structure looks, and so it seemed to me that this was fine, that this was appropriate, the way it was written, that it has to do with how much of the structure is changed from what it has been. So, does anyone have any other comments about that? Or major concerns with it? This was the definition that was suggested by the attorney. It seemed reasonable. So, I left that in there.
Pull up anything on the screen, or?
Um. Sure, you could pull up the Gateway and Village RC and Associated Amendments document. And it's on about page three of that. We can look at this page also. 3.3.3. I didn't have that on. Did I have that on my list? All right. Well, I don't think we talked about this at least much last time. But let's finish up with 3.3.5B, and then we'll come back to this.
Okay, so you want to bring this up?
No, keep going down. 3.3.5B. We passed it, I think. All right, here we are. So, building design standards, these standards shall apply to all new construction and significantly remodeled exteriors of existing structures, the latter meaning that more than 50% of the area of the structure's facade and building walls are to be affected by the remodel, with the exception of single-family dwelling or two-family dwelling uses.
Virginia?
Yeah.
You're indicating that in B, these building design standards, you're making a distinction between buildings' design standards and like aesthetic buildings' design standards?
No, just making a distinction between the value of the structure, which is used for some purposes, you know, like the FEMA purposes assess whether it's damaged 50% or more. That has to do with the whole structure, the interior, the value of the whole structure. This is just suggesting that all we're interested in is the way it looks. That was the only other suggestion for different language besides this, was using 50% of the value of the remodeling.
Are these building design standards going to apply townwide, or just specifically to the gateway?
Just to this district.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, so hearing no comments at the moment. Anybody have a hand up? Do you have any hands? Okay, yeah, I can't really see hands up at the moment, so you'll have to let me know.
No, they'll usually pop up.
Let's leave this language in here the way it is, unless anybody thinks later of something that they'd like to say about it, then we will leave it in the way it is, just a definition of what significantly remodeling means. Okay, so let's go back for a second up to the uses. So, in red, these uses, conditional uses, we're talking about the village. We had originally, on Revy's advice, included catering services and food processing facility under the light manufacturing definition. So, over the last week or so, I've had a couple of conversations with our zoning administrator, Tyler Tyler Mesia, to make sure that there wasn't anything in here. Hang on one second. Oops. This is my phone. I have to talk to Allison for just a second. Excuse me a minute. Hi, Allison. Oh. Is Allison listed as being in the meeting? Allison is wondering if she's listed as being in the meeting.
I do not see that.
Okay, Allison, you went to the Zoom page, you typed in that number. You typed in the password. No, you have to go back to the Zoom page and type and check, click on "Join a Meeting."
Or she goes to the planning commission page.
Or you can go to the Planning Commission page on the town website.
And she just has to-
And it's a live link, right?
Yep.
So. Okay, under the agenda. Okay, so do you see where it says "Join Zoom Meeting"? Down under Agenda.
She might have to click this little arrow there.
Click the little arrow, down arrow, right next to Agenda. No. So are you looking at this word Agenda and the little arrow thingy? So click on that. Okay, now go down. It says printable version, and then it says Agenda, and then it says web version. Okay, keep going down, 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 down. It says "Join Zoom Meeting," and just click on that live link. Yeah, I know, Allison, I know the problem. Is that, join the meeting, and see it has an HTTPS address? No, just where it says "Join Zoom Meeting," there's a whole list of numbers and letters, right?
Hey, Virginia, do you want somebody to do that offline, so you can keep going with the meeting?
Yeah, do you want to do it?
Sure. What's your phone number?
I just sent her an email with it, too.
Okay, Duncan has sent you an email, and Erin? Okay, is she on?
Erin, Erin's fine, yeah, she's been on.
She's on?
I'm here. Do you need me for something?
No, I just saw your earlier email, Erin, sorry.
No worries.
Allison's in the meeting too now.
Oh, she is, all right.
Okay, I think you're in the meeting. Yep.
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay. Okay, great. So, I'm gonna say bye, and we'll see you in the meeting, and okay, see ya, bye. We can restart the recording if it was off.
We do have all that. That's good.
Sorry about that. All right, so catering services and food processing facility, Revy wanted to put all of this under light manufacturing. In talking to Tyler, our zoning administrator, he felt strongly that the intuitive sense that these were different from light manufacturing was worth listing them separately. So when we think about the Village Residential Commercial District, we have Harrington's, for instance, it's a food processing facility. We have, you know, we might have a catering service. The Richmond Community Kitchens is actually in the Jolena Court District, but something similar to that might want to be called a catering service. So he felt that it would be much easier for people to understand if we listed those separately from light manufacturing. So I put them in here for you all to see what you think about that idea. Revy was interested in it being as simple as possible, and so anything like that should be light manufacturing. I was kind of on Tyler's side a little bit here with this, thinking that, yeah, there could be kind of different in such that we would want to have them in one district and not have them in a different district where we had light manufacturing. Okay, so Jay is writing in the chat that he's agreeing with this. We don't use the chat too much, Jay, but that's fine.
I only did that because I'm not a member of the Planning Commission, and I don't want to talk over Planning Commission members.
Yep, that's fine, that's great. I have a little trouble looking at the chat at the same time as looking at the other things we're looking at, and people's hands. Any commissioners want to weigh in on this? What do you think? Catering service and food processing have separate definitions in our current zoning. They are listed separately in some districts in our current zoning.
I like keeping them separate. Same here.
Seemed reasonable to me, I mean.
I'm fine with it.
Okay, Lisa?
Um, yep, I think they're different. I mean, I see light manufacturing, and I don't think of catering. Or cemetery or anything. I think of light manufacturing.
Yep. Okay, so if we're going to keep them separately, do we want them in this district? That's the other question. So, so far, I put them in both districts, the Gateway and the Village. They seem okay. It seemed okay to me to have them in the both districts.
Yep, makes sense.
Agreed, they're conditional uses anyway, so they merit a further review, so, yeah.
Yeah, they would have further review by the DRB. They would, of course, have to abide by the performance standards that we have that apply townwide, no noise, odors, et cetera, at the property lines, so why not?
Right.
All right, anybody opposed to this, or shall we leave them in here like this and move on? All right, not seeing any hands, so we'll do that. We'll leave them and move on. So, we'll go to section 3.4.1. And Lisa had suggested that we added language about protecting the iconic view of Camel's Hump in the gateway as a feature or as part of the purpose. And so, she went out and looked at it. I looked at it also. Lisa, what do you think? Do you still think that's, she wrote a memo that I forwarded to you all. For most of the gateway, you can't see Camel's Hump. You can see it best from the highway.
Right.
It's, you know, not very visible from anywhere, and unlikely to be from Route 2. Do you want to talk about it, Lisa? What do you think? Do you still want to do that, or no?
Well, you know, you're right, Virginia. I saw it from the road, and it wasn't going to tramp in everybody's yard, but there's even less visible from any of the properties, because it's to the left of, it's to the north of the view we had. The more north you go, the less you see. You know, I think it becomes not all that significant. It's nice driving in to see it, but that's about it. I mean, someone on those properties is going to have difficulty seeing it, depending on what's next door and things like that. So it ceases to be iconic if you really can't access it anyway. So.
Yep. Well, I kind of agree with that. I mean, I have looked at it a couple of times coming into Richmond. It's kind of behind a hill, actually, with trees on it. So, it's likely that we're going to be able to build anything tall enough to obscure it, so anybody else want to weigh in on this subject? So, so far in this version, I've left that out, because I felt that research that Lisa did sort of suggested that it was not necessary. Okay, so we'll leave that out. Next item on the memo list is 3.4.3. We're moving on to the gateway. We do have some things in terms of pharmacy and grocery store and so on that we can talk about when we talk about the definitions. They are in both districts, but let's move on to the next item that we had us on the list was outdoor storage as a use in the gateway RC. This is not an allowed use in the current district. And frankly, outdoor storage as a use is kind of confusing, I think, and problematic in and of itself, because some uses have outdoor storage associated with them. So, I looked at the uses that were, that had outdoor storage. Business yard, cottage industry could have outdoor storage, light manufacturing, powered vehicle or machinery service, a recreation facility, and maybe a fitness facility, because they mentioned game courts. Those things are already mentioned. Something about outdoor storage is mentioned, either in the definition, you know, which says it has to be screened. Basically, outdoor storage has to be screened. So if it mentions that, you assume that outdoor storage is allowed. If there is anything else, I wasn't sure if there are other uses besides those ones that already mention it that might want to apply for outdoor storage. So, in the Willis Farm commercial area, I felt we could conceivably need an outdoor storage category for such uses as brewery, tavern, state or community-owned facility, warehouse, childcare facility, or something else in that, in the commercial part of the gateway. So I personally would recommend adding it as a conditional use that the DRB would have to look at. It would have to abide by the standards that say it has to be screened. I don't know. Does anyone else have any comments about that, or? Yes, no?
I do. I think that that makes sense. I guess my question is, though, is would this allow outdoor storage that is not a part of a attached business? You know, basically, if somebody wanted to set up a lot for storage of equipment or whatever, without there being a business right next to it.
Well, the definition currently in the ordinance for outdoor storage just is, it's under storage. Storage outdoor. The keeping in an unenclosed area of any goods, junk, material, merchandise, or vehicles in the same place for more than 24 hours. So it would totally depend on the DRB's feeling about what this outdoor storage was, I presume, you know. We could limit it to commercial enterprises, presumably. We'd have to rewrite the definition of storage outdoor. Or we could put in our suggested amendments, outdoor storage for a commercial enterprise, for instance. It's a pretty wide-open definition that includes junk, which seems like it might be problematic, but
Well, though, as long as it screens, you know, well, junk's got to go somewhere.
Joy, can we ask you if you could conceive of any uses outside of the ones where it's already mentioned as part of the use? Any uses that you would conceivably want to have a freestanding category of outdoor storage?
I didn't look at it in that way, so I'd have to think about it, and I know we're trying to get through this today, but so it's not just us, right? It's everybody in the gateway. But my question is, you know, how does everybody feel about literally outdoor storage? Like, you know, some sort of so I don't know if that's considered outdoor storage, but like little, like, you know, when you see a U-Haul where the garage doors go up, I think that's interior storage, right?
If it's in a building, it would be indoor storage, which we are including under warehousing category.
So then exterior storage is literally just being able to put things outside and not worry about it.
Yeah, I mean-
I'd have to go through the list, Virginia. I could look at it while you guys move on and see if I see anything else. I think it's nice to have a lone item, so that you can apply it to other uses. Like you said, it could pop up at a daycare or anything, really. I mean, we found that with our situation, you know, we didn't think about how much you end up having to put outside. That's my thought.
Yeah, I mean, the one that I was thinking about was the Stone Corral, which has all that stuff stored right outside in front of it with those-
I mean, it's almost like every use should be allowed to do it. It should be an option for any use to add that to what it is, so it's kind of hard not to include it. So.
Lisa?
Yeah, I'm trying to decide if I agree with anyone or don't agree with anyone. You know, outdoor storage per se, I think it really has to be attached to a use, to one of these conditional uses, not a standalone use by itself. So if it's a part of one of these uses, which are going to be reviewed anyway, then that storage activity gets to be reviewed along with the use, which I think is the right way to do it. You know, it could be different for each one of these uses. A brewery, they might store kegs. A fitness facility, they probably won't be storing kegs, and it'll be something different. And I think that's that's the only way to really put it in context, is to associate it with a use. As a standalone use, I can't make sense out of it. I worry about dumps. And I said that before, you know, a business yard as a use, I don't understand quite what that would be, but if it were a for example, machinery rental, okay, they have a backhoe, they have a tractor, you know, whatever. If it were a light manufacturing, well, you know, maybe they store goods, finished goods, or raw materials outside. But again, that would be reviewed along with the the conditional use review process itself. I'm more comfortable with that.
Yeah, the way that it's worded, it is not actually currently in the Gateway District.
Right.
In the commercial district, it is listed as storage, comma, outdoor, as an accessory use to any permitted or conditional use.
Right, and I think I'm okay with that. It's not going to be a standalone storage use with no other ownership, obvious.
Yeah, well, you could attach it to a single-family dwelling, because that's a permitted use, for instance, if you want it, but you would have to have a use, you know, at least some off this list, so.
That's a good point, yeah.
So we could put it in like that, storage as an accessory use to any permitted or conditional use. So Jay, it seems like that, okay?
Mm-hmm, okay.
Anybody else want to?
I like that approach, Virginia.
Way in on that, okay. So we can use the language that exists. And I haven't so far suggested it for the Village District, but for the Gateway RC District, I don't know if we want to also do it for the Village. Anybody have a feeling about that?
Yeah, I have a feeling about it. I don't know what it is. Let me think about this for a minute.
Well, that's a start, Lisa, anyway.
I have feelings.
Yep.
There, there, I'll just pine in here and say that there certainly could be uses, outdoor storage uses, in the Village that would be reasonable, particularly with the guidances that are-
Reasonable, particularly with the, uh, the guidances that are, that are there as far as protecting it from, um. Um, runoff and whatever, visual screening, um. And it's a conditional use, so. Hey, let, you know, the, the DRB can be a, a reasonable judge of that because. And it'd be impossible to legislate something like that because there's so many different permutations of outdoor storage.
Big center, yeah, that's it.
How do we feel about having the word junk in the definition?
Well, one person's junk is another person's treasure, you know, that's, that's the description of junk. That's a tough one.
So we want to have, we want to leave the definition as is, or do you want to take out junk, or do you?
It's descriptive.
Oh, boy. That.
I don't know what they had in mind when they wrote that in there exactly, but.
Right, doesn't junk kind of by definition not have any use? So how can it be a use if it has no use?
I, I put it differently and I, somebody was saying it's in the eye of the beholder, it's, the thing I like about it is it's, it's saying that it's, um. It's, it's the materials that, that are, you know, belong to the business or whatever divorced from any kind of value. You know, the, it's not, it's not up to the town to decide whether it's, uh, is worth keeping or not, you know, or has, uh. You know, some, somehow, uh, offensive other than, you know, whether it's, you know, actually bothering somebody because it's leaking or making noise or what, you know?
Hmm.
So you like having it in there?
I do.
Okay, yep. Allison, I, I think it would be good to take it out.
I think as long as people, as long as the stipulations are that what they're storing has something to do with their business. I, I sort of agree with the point of view that, uh, one man's junk is another one's treasure. I think that's open to so much interpretation that, that I, I just don't think it's needed in there. So I agree with those people that didn't think it was needed.
Okay, Dan?
I, I think the term junk is probably too vague, um.
Yeah.
Like a statutory interpretation without, without some, unless we put some definition to it. Um, which I don't, I don't know that we want to just defer to the property owner because then we could ultimately. Have a hoarder situation, I think when you look at some like antique shops going out on. That 117 towards Essex, there are some that maybe are approaching junk, uh, levels. Um, but, uh, yeah, I think, I think we need, I think we need something, but I just don't know that junk is the, is the right word.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not going to, uh, defend that, it's more, it was more of a, uh, notion than anything else and I will definitely defer to my colleagues.
And the other, the other questionable one is vehicles, I mean, we've already said at the powered machinery, you can only have four stored cars. This seems like you could have any amount of vehicles if the DRB said that was okay. But, so anyway, think about that, um, I think Jay, you had your hand up. You are muted, you are muted.
Thank you for catching me before I sit a whole essay, um, the thing that worries me about putting junk is somebody who has cars. Parked behind a screen fence and claims to be an auto restorer, but somehow never gets around to restoring them. And later they're in a big heap of rust. I say that because that actually happened in my hometown back in Virginia. And it turned out that even though it was a god awful eyesore, it was covered, it had been given a conditional use permit. And they didn't really know how to take, how to reverse that. So I worry that people, that if you leave a crack open by saying junk, that people will force it open and, and do some scenarios we probably wouldn't want.
Okay, um. And another thing to think about is the fact that this definition says the keeping in an unenclosed area. And we've already said that you have to screen them, so. How does that work together? That's another problem that I have with the definition for outdoor storage, Lisa?
Um, yeah, I, I agree with some of what I'm hearing, uh, with Jay said. You know, again, going back to the conditional use review by the DRB, I think there's a great opportunity to really define. How much storage this use is looking for, the major, the primary use. And that gives the DRB chance to. Put some limits on it right there. If those limits are violated, I think there's no question that there's a violation, um. You know, anybody could complain and, and have grounds for that, I think. I, I guess I, I just can't, and I agree with Dan, junk is, you're right, it's a very, uh, nebulous term. So whatever the business is or the use is that's needing that storage, that starts defining what might be out there in the outdoor storage. You know, if it's a, if it's a car restorer or something and they've got old washing machines out there. And that's a stretch, they, they need to explain that. And, uh, I, I think, sure, uses, you know, that involve storage, they may need it, but it can be abused and like to see the abuse not happen.
So I'm hearing you say that you're okay with leaving it in as a conditional use, but maybe changing the definition and making it much more specific. To relate to the enterprise that has the storage?
Exactly, exactly, it's not a. Uh, I'm sorry, I missed the last part?
Maybe putting some other limits on it, like.
Yes. And that's the opportunity, you know, the conditional use, I, I think is, you know, wonderfully, uh. Uh, defined as, you know, let's take this case by case and, and adapt something to what's actually at hand, so, yeah.
Okay, great, Chris?
I, I'm struggling to see a definition on the screen and I've. I've looked at, I've looked at the materials and I, I haven't been able to find. Are you talking about a specific definition for junk we're supposed to be looking at?
No, with, the only definition that we have is for outdoor storage in our current zoning.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I. Recommended that we add it as a freestanding conditional use in the gateway, just as outdoor storage. What we have found is that. In the commercial district, it is outdoor storage as an accessory use for an existing permitted or conditional use. Then we look at the definition of outdoor storage and it's the one that has junk in it, which is not defined, it has junk, vehicles. Um, I don't know if you would be able to get that in the, out of the zoning, so. If you look under the, um. Complete RZR. The complete. RZR zoning, go, go back to our, our documents.
So I, I take it from what you just explained, Virginia, that. That storing, uh, stuff in the commercial district is, um, an accessory use. But that in a mixed use district. It's not an accessory use.
In the mixed use district, it is not a freestanding conditional use. You can't apply for a conditional use for outdoor storage, okay, now go to the definitions. At the end, at the very end of that document, so. The only ones. There are some. Categories of use like light manufacturing, for instance.
Mm-hmm.
Light manufacturing in the definition of light manufacturing. References. Outdoor storage. So we assume that it's already included as an accessory use in light manufacturing.
But it, and are we talking still about the gateway here?
Yeah, talking about the gateway, but.
Because don't, don't we require all outside storage to be screened?
Yes.
So isn't it immaterial whether the items being screened are of any value or not? It's just that if you're storing stuff as part of your. Property within this district, you have to screen it.
Right, the only question is, as Jay pointed out, if you have somebody, okay, stop, 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 go back up to storage, okay. This is what we've got, go back up a little further, storage outdoor, right in the middle of this page, storage outdoor. The keeping in an unenclosed area, so that's a little bit problematic. Can you completely screen something if it's in an unenclosed area? I don't know, do we want to, you know, would we want to change that in the definition of outdoor storage? And here's what's allowed, of any goods, junk, material, merchandise or vehicles in the same place.
Yeah, that's, that is, that is intended to keep, and that applies to every district in, in, in the town?
That applies to wherever outdoor storage is listed as a use, which is only the commercial districts.
Only the commercial districts?
Only commercial, I'm not even sure it's in the IC district, it's in the commercial district.
But surely in, on my residential property, I can store in an unenclosed area, any goods, junk, material or merchandise or vehicles. In the same place for more than 24 hours. I'm doing that now.
I mean, that's what's confusing about having it as a use, you know?
But, but, but.
Use.
S, s, so, the way this is designed and the way this is drafted, from my view, it is to, um, avoid. Um, what somebody mentioned earlier, um, in terms of just. Uh, storing a lot of extraneous stuff on your property, um. That doesn't move. And isn't in an enclosed area, so I saw properties that many towns in Vermont have had difficulty with. Where you can have somebody who stores all of this material outside, somebody had mentioned, you know, hoarding. Um, some of it, you know, it's not all junk because used cars do have value. And that value, you know, some, maybe somebody's waiting for steel prices to rise, I don't know. But I, I think having a definition, um. Is, is important for the town if, if it has a, a really bad problem property, whether it's residential or commercial. I, I, I would do some investigatory work with our attorney to figure out. This particular area. Because the state doesn't have absolute powers over unofficial junkyards either. It's a very thorny issue in the state, at the state level.
Uh-huh. I mean, you know, presumably someone who just pu, had a house. And had a whole bunch of junk cars is not, has not applied for an outdoor storage permit. They just assume, like you originally said, that you can put anything you want outside your house.
That's where they live.
That's where they live, so. What exactly is the point of having an outdoor storage use category, if anybody can put anything they want outside? Their building?
Well, this particular definition only allows people to, uh, keep in an unenclosed area, goods, junk, material, merchandise, only for 24 hours. It is maybe something that people don't. Um, know, but it, it does give the municipality power in enforcing that. Should people not be permitted to do that? It, it, I, I don't think they use it for, for people storing their firewood like I do outside in an unenclosed area. But I do think, you know, people in the town store lots of stuff in an enclosed area and the town chooses not to enforce it, but I don't know. I would consult with an attorney though. About junk law and municipal. Um, zoning regs and, and how other towns, um, do this, if this is our only mechanism for it, I sure wouldn't want to get rid of it, but I don't know that it is.
Okay.
Sorry.
Yep, confusing, um, Joy?
Hey, Virginia, I, I don't think that it needs to be enclosed if it's screened. I mean, what's the purpose of us wanting it enclosed?
So you can't see it?
Right, so screening does the same thing, I mean, that's, we're saying at least you screen, so that's. Enclosed, that's like you have to put a whole fence around it and then screen it. So I think, I think that's, that's a bit much.
So what do you foresee as the screening?
Any carveridey, any kind of evergreen tree?
Didn't, didn't we mention that? Haven't we discussed that earlier that it? I mean, it could be a fence, it could be natural vegetation.
And in terms of the gateway, we have to screen everything anyway. I mean, you can't, you can't see anything in the gateway, we gotta hide and go.
So one of the things that the attorney suggested was we differentiate between screening. And completely blocking from view. Because those things, you know, and he, he just speaks from his experience with cases, I guess. That there's a, could be a difference of opinion as to what's, what constitutes screening, so. What he said was, if you want to block it completely from view, you have to say block completely from view. If you, if you're okay with screening with a deciduous hedge that sheds its leaves in the winter and then you can kind of see through it. Then that's okay, that could be considered screening. So screening is one of those kind of vague words, and so he suggested that you are clear about whether. You want it to be completely blocked from view or not. So that's just one point relative to the unenclosed. Word.
Isn't, sorry, just to chime in, isn't the difference between enclosed and unenclosed? Just that it's not inside another structure? And so enclosed would be fully in a box. Uh, because the definition of storage indoor is the keeping in an enclosed area. And storage outdoor is the keeping in an unenclosed area, and so that would presume that. If it's indoors and that means enclosed. Then, then that is enclosed and screening would just be from view.
It could be, I just have one more comment on the, uh, on the enclosed thing, if we are gonna say it for this, is that you can put a chain link fence up and see right through it.
Mm-hmm.
So enclosed doesn't necessarily mean screened.
Okay, so maybe.
Unless you're saying it's inside a building, which, and that makes sense, Dan, I actually think that is what it's intended. Now that you're saying that.
So, yeah, I see what you mean, I think that's a good point, I think you could replace unenclosed area with outdoors. Would be clearer to me, but. Do you think it's clear enough the way it is written, Dan?
Yeah, because if you had outdoors in the definition of storage outdoor, then that would be a circular definition.
Yeah, well, that's kind of what I wonder about the whole definition anyway, but. If it's circular, I mean, you know, if anyone can keep anything outside on their property, then we even have definition. But I don't know if you want to speak to that from your legal point of view. Is this, is this something we should have in here as a conditional definition that is in some zoning? Some districts and not in other zoning districts?
The, the, the requirement of screening outdoor storage or just outdoor storage in general?
Having outdoor storage is listed as a conditional use. In the commercial district, the village commercial district, the IC district, that's where it's listed.
So for commercial purposes, I think it makes sense. For residential purposes, I think it gets sticky for the reasons Chris discussed, like firewood or, or whatever. Um, for commercial uses. You know, I, I, I like the tethering to some sort of accessory. Use of the, like the business, tie, tie it to the business.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I feel like that's not only defensible because it, it keeps sort of things from getting out of control. Um, but also just is how most, I think, businesses use it, they don't usually store things not used in the business. Uh, or have it on, on site at all.
So would you put in this definition of outdoor storage as a use, that it is a? as a use, that it is a commercial, that it is tied to a business?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't put that in the definition, but if we were going to, I mean, if, if we're not gonna use, we're not gonna, I, my, my belief, based on what Lisa suggested and preference is that outdoor storage not be a use, but something that's discussed and regulated as an accessory. I guess use is the word, but not as like a conditional use versus permitted use.
Right, subordinate to the main, the primary use.
So that would be, you're suggesting that you would have it under conditional uses subordinate to a business.
No, I, 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 I think, I think that I would, I wouldn't have put it in the uses. But more so if we're gonna have regulations on, which we do, on screening outdoors storage, I think there might be different. Maybe what the obligation to screen versus not screen, based on commercial versus residential or you know, that, that's where I think it should be, that's where I think it should be handled, not necessarily in the permitted uses or the conditional uses or the definitions. Just if we're putting restrictions on said use.
Yeah, I think that's more defensible.
So you would not have it as it's, so it's already a use in the commercial, the IC and the VC districts, in those three commercial districts. It's listed as a use that a conditional use as an accessory structure to any other permitted or conditional use. So we have to, that's there for right now, we can't do anything about that. What we can do in the gateway district is either list it like that as a use or not list it like that as a use. We've already said outdoor storage has to be screened in that, in this district. But, and some things already come with their own outdoor storage, like light manufacturing. But other things like a tavern, for instance, doesn't come with any outdoor storage, so we would just have that as part of their conditional application for a tavern, presumably. And we would somehow ignore until we get to amending those other districts. We would ignore the fact that that is listed as a separate use in those districts. Which is a little confusing to people, but oh, well.
Yeah, it, it, it's all kind of jumbled for me at this point, but I think the gateway is screened. And I don't know why this is an issue if we're allowing for screening. People can store stuff outside, but they have to screen it in this particular district. So I, whatever problem we're trying to solve, I think we have solved it by mandating things stored outside must be screened.
Chris, I guess, I guess that the, and this could be like a, a weird example, but if we're allowing something as a use, and then that becomes a part of someone's business, does the screening of it look more ridiculous than the thing itself? Right, like?
Yeah, I mean, if, if somebody's storing old decrepit cranes on their property and then they have to build a hundred foot wall.
Right.
But that, you know, I think, I think those are outliers, like we're talking about a small little district with the northern side is really the district. And those lots are deep, they back up to the interstate, they've got huge ravines in them. I, I just don't see this being a big problem and that our screening requirement should take care of it. So I can't conceive of a thing where the screening is worse than the thing itself.
Yeah, yeah. Well, but when Joy starts storing antique coal mining cranes on her property.
She does have an affinity for those antique coal mining cranes.
All right, so I think what I'm hearing is people don't want to list it as a use in this district. They just want it to be if somebody and hopefully to the zoning administrator, this will not be confusing since it's listed as a use in some other districts. But in the gateway, the DRB is just gonna have to look at each use like a tavern that comes up and they say, we want to store our kegs outside. And their DRB, the only thing they're gonna say is, is it's green. That's okay with people, uh, you know?
I can't see it.
Yeah, yeah, I guess I have to agree.
So I'm okay with that as long as the DRB is gonna set, is not going to set, while it's not listed as a conditional use in the zone.
That we're not changing it in the other districts as well, and they're going to be confused. I mean, I think.
I think that's an issue, someone's gonna bring up for sure, it's gonna be used.
So how do, what's the recommendation for fixing it, Virginia?
Good, you're not asking.
I'm asking you what the recommendation for fixing it is. I mean, there have been some other things that I have had to explain because we're doing this one district at a time, which has these problems in that it's different from other districts. And so you have to make really sure that your DRB and your zoning administrator know what this district says and what it means. And the fact that we haven't put it in as an out, as a use, conditional use, doesn't mean that we're not allowing it.
Well, we can't use, we can't use the defin, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, that's all right, go, no, go ahead, Chris.
I, I was just gonna say that we can't use the definition for storage outdoor because it's got that twenty-four hour period. You're really talking about storing stuff that's screened for, for, you know, an undetermined period of time.
No, for it's more than twenty-four hours. It says for more than twenty-four hours.
Yeah, you're not allowed to store stuff for more than twenty-four hours. And the stuff that we're talking about storing is gonna be out there for quite a while.
I think I have the answer.
Go ahead.
Outdoor storage when associated with another use?
I was thinking the same thing, Joy, yeah, yeah.
That's what it is in the other districts where it's currently listed, in the commercial districts. It's if it's associated, if it's an accessory use to any other permitted or conditional use, we can use that language.
I think that accomplishes what everyone's gotten to here, right?
Think so, yeah. If we just simply in the definition add that there may be specific requirements in a, a particular zoning district. Something to that effect, just to link the definition to what it's applying to.
I think that language works.
So just the language that.
A language attaching it to the use that it was permitted for.
Right, yeah. Specific uses may have conditions, you know, in their zoning district, something like that.
Okay, and we're leaving the definition the way it is, right? The way it is written here in the current zoning regulation, we're leaving this definition the way it is.
Well, I think that's the problem.
No, I, I was misreading it, I understand it better now.
Yeah, it's, Chris, it's anything that's longer, it means you do anything.
More than twenty-four hours.
It's more than twenty-four hours, so, okay. So you're good with leaving it like that, junk and all, okay. Joy, you had something else, I think, and then Lisa.
No, I put it up for that change.
You're up for that change, you said?
I put my, I raised my hand to suggest that we add that verbiage, that was why.
Okay, Lisa?
Yeah, I guess, I'm not sure where I am now at the moment, but yeah, if the definition of storage indoor, outdoor, whatever, just simply added that you know, the particular zoning district may have further condition, or further requirements. You know, that would just link it to whatever, wherever we're doing storage, wherever someone's doing storage. But that means changing the definitions, I don't know if you want to do that.
Okay, um, all right, yeah, well, I think that would be hard to do with a definition to link it. I mean, the DRB should be doing the linking.
Okay, yeah, that's what they're for, okay.
Yeah, a comment from Aaron, I live in a condo across from Stone Corral, man and machine, they store stuff outside, barrels, tires, both kept tidy, would be hard to hide. Does this junk idea mean it will give the DRB or select board a confusing thing to enforce? Well, junk is already in the definition and you know, it seems like people want to leave it there. Why it's not screened at the Stone Corral and Man and Machine? I have talked to Heidi Borman about screening of her recycle, her tires waiting to be recycled and a couple of other things that she stores outside. And she says her aim is to keep them from being visible from the public road. So, you know, they're not exactly completely blocked from view. But they're somewhat screened. Allison.
What if we just took the word junk out of there? I, I think, uh, you know, I was thinking about how could that have gotten in there in the first place anyways? Probably about somebody doing a project of some kind and that leaves behind junk temporarily, and they're trying to say, okay, if you have junk there, you gotta get it out of there within twenty-four hours, but I, I kind of find it a bother to have the word junk in there as being permitted. People need to clean that up, but I, I don't know, it's.
I agree, Allison, I think material and goods covers it. You know, I mean, why bring it up, junk, that you can actually get a permit to have junk? I don't know, but.
That, that's what I think. I, yes, that's my opinion. Maybe others have a reason to disagree, but um, I don't, I, I think I, I'm sympathizing with the person who lives across the road from looking at all these tires and junk and whatever uh, every day. It, it's sort of, I mean, in a, in a, from a real estate point of view, it actually devalues uh, the neighbor's property if they're looking at junk. This does.
So Allison, just so I understand, you, you're recommending to pull junk out of the definition?
I think so.
Okay. Yeah, I'm with that.
Yeah, I mean, I'd be with that because anybody could claim that what they have there is material. You know, if we take the word junk out, it's gonna make no difference whatsoever. Because if you want to call what you have material, then how can anybody argue with that? Even if we might think it was junk, you can still call it material, so.
Yeah, the word junk is open to interpretation. It's hard to define, and I think that in a, in a public hearing or something, it would, it's just too confusing, too general. Too junky, I take it out. That's my vote.
Dan, can we take junk out and be fine?
Sure, yeah. It's better than the I know it when I see it approach.
How, everybody's okay with taking out the word junk?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, let's just take out the word junk and put it into this gateway district as being an accessory use for another use. That good with everybody?
Why do we want it in the gateway?
Well, that's the only one we're working on right now. I, I thought.
We want outdoor storage in the gateway in case any of the businesses need to have outdoor storage that don't already list it as an accessory use in their own definitions. Okay.
Does that mean that residential properties?
Yes, yep.
Have to get, be permitted for outdoor storage? Even if there's a screening requirement in the district?
Good question.
Yeah, presumably they should.
Why?
Currently.
Why are we treating residential properties in the gateway different than we're gonna be treating residential properties elsewhere? Cause I'm not gonna support screening in residential properties for outdoor storage.
The, the way we have the amendments written, outdoor storage of any kind has to be screened.
In the gateway? Oh, okay. Yeah, but now you're talking about linking it to a, a permit, and I thought you were talking about a conditional use permit um, with respect to a business, because it's a mixed-use district. I didn't know you were sweeping residential properties into that bucket as well.
Well, if we don't want to have residential properties in, then you would have to say a commercial, then you would have to put the word commercial somehow into the
Or just, or just a conditional use, because all the conditional uses are commercial, I think.
Or, yeah, or you could say it's an accessory use to any other conditional use.
I'm much more comfortable with that approach. I mean, I do, I am sympathetic to what Allison said that you shouldn't be looking at junk from your property. And, and that goes for residential properties as well as commercials, so I am sympathetic to that, but this is a pretty wide open definition about any goods, material, merchandise, or vehicles.
Okay, yeah, so there's two separate issues. One is the simple issue of taking the word junk out of the definition. Okay, so that everybody seems to be okay with. The other question is whether we should have this outdoor storage as a use category in the gateway. And if we want to limit it to commercial, as an accessory to any other commercial use.
I, I think that's the only way to keep keep the thing within, you know, boundaries within, within the guide rails.
Okay, everybody good with that? Only commercial uses, it's only a use for commercial use, an accessory use for other commercial uses. Okay.
So presumably, the properties that are residential within this district have the same rights for storing outdoor stuff like firewood the same as other residential properties within the town.
Yes.
Thank you.
And for that matter, for other commercial properties outside of this district, I mean, you know, what about the, like the ag rez district, or the high-density rez district, or, you know, someplace where businesses are allowed? Presumably, if it's not listed as a use, then people have the same rights of storing stuff as any other use in that district.
I mean, I, I do understand the storage issues that apparently Stone Corral may be having within their facility. But I, I really don't as one particular planning commission member, I really don't want to have our zoning regulations be so stringent that we're forcing businesses to leave town.
I agree with that.
Yeah, that's, I do too.
So even though the Stone Corral may be in a facility, and, and the fact that they are in town is just a wonderful thing. They're in a facility that might need their needs, I certainly don't want our regulations to push them over the edge to say, well, why are we fighting with the town over storage of stuff? Let's just start looking for another location. That, that would not be good for the town. So I think we have, do have, need a flexible hand when we're dealing with commercial businesses and their ability to store materials to successfully manage their businesses. But you have to balance that as well with the outdoor storage and the impact it can have on property values, as Allison said.
Right, yeah, I agree with you too, Chris. You know, I mean, Stone Corral and, and Man and Machine both have been reviewed whenever they were in the past. And if they're meeting, if they're currently meeting the conditions that were placed on them, you know, at the review, then that's what they, that's what they're doing. If they're inadequate, well, that's a different question. But uh, and I'm not aware that either of those businesses have, you know, gone outside their uh, conditions put on them at the review or at the approval. Nobody said that.
So the only thing that would be different in the gateway is that we're, would be requiring these to be screened. So if the Stone Corral wanted to move out there, we're okay with requiring that it be screened? Or completely blocked from view, whichever one you want. All right, so that's, we'll go with that for the moment um, and move on a little bit.
Yes.
So we had a few recommended changes to the parking table that I made that seemed uncontroversial. Dwelling, single family, there was a question since it listed 1.5 spaces and get the parking table, it's sort of near the end of our.
This one, oh, of our agenda.
Of our, of our memo, meeting memo. So the question was, what's a point five of a space for one, you know, single family dwelling? So we changed that to one space minimum dwelling for a single family house. Inner guest house changed to one space per guest room, so the room guest was added. Restaurant standard, so the table that Revy gave us had 15 spaces for a thousand foot square feet gross floor area minimum. So I looked at a whole bunch of other zoning parking tables and it looked like five was more like, so I don't know if that was what it was supposed to be. You can go to the meeting memo or you can go to, go to the one right above the Richmond zoning regulations, Gateway and Village RC and associated amendments on the left side.
Yeah.
Left side, that one, yeah. Um, so after doing that research, I put in five spaces per a thousand foot as opposed to 15 and 10 as the maximum as opposed to 20. Based on looking at other documents. I did ask the people at regional planning about using square foot gross floor area, you can go up a little bit as opposed to occupancy standards. Uh, somebody brought that up at our last meeting um, and um, no, you were in the right place. Yeah, this table, yep, going up a little bit. No, other way, other way, sorry, down. Okay, stop, stop, stop. So restaurant standard, five spaces instead of 15 for a minimum. So anyway, the people at regional planning, Taylor Newton and Darren Schibler said both systems are used equally amount. You can go with the square footage or you can go with the occupancy. Um, you know, the fire marshal's occupancy standards. He said there was no real difference between the two and both were imperfect. And so I left it the way it was, the way the table that Revy made as opposed to going and getting a whole other table based on the occupancy. So, does anyone have any comments about any of those parking table changes?
I do.
Yes, somebody has a hand up.
Thank you so much for going through that and making those changes and for your time for input into that, Virginia. I really appreciate it and I think everybody should and will.
And I really wish that we had a planner, but anyway.
Yeah, I'll second, I'll second what Joy said. I mean, these have been reviewed by people who do this for a living and, you know, whether they're here or not, um, that's, that's not a guess. It's based on you know, some evidence of what does work and I'm, it's more than what I have.
Yeah, well, I mean, basically that's how I feel about the whole parking table is that you need a planner to put it together and Revy put it together. And there were a few little things that we didn't like about it, but.
Right. And did we pay him for that? I think we did. So there, there you go. It's professional.
All right, any other concerns with that? Okay. So those were the things that I had on my list as emerging as unresolved issues from our last meeting. That's good. A few other things have come up in the last two weeks. One is with my conversations with Tyler Mesia, the zoning administrator, who I went to talk to because I just wanted to make sure that we weren't doing things that he was going to be, find impossible to use somehow. You know, we should have, we should have communication amongst these boards who deal with the zoning, as far as I'm concerned. Anyway, so he, one of his main concerns was that he found the phrase character of the area or character of the neighborhood, a phrase that we have put in as features in both these districts, the character of the area feature. Non-regulatory, but the DRB can use this to guide their decisions. He said they had a lot of trouble knowing what that was supposed to mean in terms of features of the area or character of the area. Is it like the immediate neighborhood? Is it the town? What is the area? What's the definition? So he suggested, and I checked this out with regional planning and with the attorney, if we could define character of the area or character of the neighborhood, a phrase which is also used in our ordinance, to be character of the zoning district. So for instance, when we say in our features about the village, the character of the area, you know, has unique small businesses, blah, blah, blah. What it means is the character of the district. And the people at regional planning were fine with that. They thought it comported with the statutory, with the state's definition of character of the area. They thought that that was a good idea to define it. The attorney wanted to add the second sentence, if you're looking at the memo from the chair now, the second sentence. So anyway, based on that, my suggestion is to add a definition in the definition section for character of the area. Here we go, it's, yep, stop, good. So the definition that we would add in section seven is character of the area or character of the neighborhood. These phrases shall be equivalent to the phrase character of the zoning district in which the land that is the subject of the application is located as defined by the purposes and the features of the zoning district as well as by the standards set forth for the district and any specific standards, goals, or policies for the zoning district described in the town plan. That was what I suggested that we have. I sent it to the attorney and he said that was fine, but he would add, based on his experience, the second sentence in the definition. The DRB may also look to the architectural appearance, structure, size, parking configuration, setbacks, lot coverages, and landscaping styles of properties within 1,500 feet of the property that is the subject of the application. This apparently has been litigated that at times, people want to shrink the area to the immediate vicinity. But the basic definition is that it's the character of the district as we have described it and as the standards we have set up indicate. But also if the DRB wishes, they can also look at the things surrounding it. Now, to me, this adds an element of subjectivity, but the lawyer recommended that we add this, so I am recommending that we add this definition in section seven.
Virginia, I, I agree. I think he's given the DRB an out with that language or whoever wrote this with the may also look rather than will also look. You know, that, that puts a real um, that puts it in the DRB's lap, which is, I think where it should be. I'm, I'm thinking of railroad street, for example. You've got some wildly different uses there. Uh, how would you define that? What, what character is that area? I know that's not part of what we're looking at, but we're going to get there eventually.
Right, well, we're going to have to write it in a way that includes whatever is in it.
Yeah.
And then, you know, basically the DRB is going to have to say to themselves, does, is this compatible with features that we have described for this district?
Ultimately, it's kind of subjective and, you know, if it's been chewed on enough, I think the claim can be made. It's been considered really carefully, whi- which is probably important, so. Might be the best we got. Yeah, okay.
I mean, the other thing that's kind of subjective, obviously, is the fact that we have put in as features of these districts language that is designed to guide us away from the chain businesses. So the village, the village.
Yeah.
Character of the area shall be comprised of predominantly unique, small-scale commercial enterprises that reflect the independent entrepreneurial economy of a small historic town or village center intermixed with housing.
There you go.
That's not regulatory language, but it is designed to guide the DRB to think about the scale of the buildings. To think about whether it reflects the independent entrepreneurial economy. And the, the attorney was fine with that language. He thought that language was fine to have as a feature. And that the DRB could, if they so choose, chose uh, cite that language in any kind of a decision that they made.
Good, good.
Definition that I'm suggesting we add just defines a little bit what character of the area means, so. Anybody have any problem with that?
That's good.
Okay. All right, Joy.
I, so what's the character of the gateway?
What's what?
What is, what do you say the character of the gateway is?
The character of the gateway is, it consists of the purpose statement that we have for the gateway and those features, those eight features that we have. That's the character of the gateway district. Plus the regulations that we have put in for the district.
No, I get that. I mean, but if you're really going to apply this in the DRB and say, well, that's not part of, I mean, what, I can't even define what the character of the gateway is. That's a tough one. It's mostly residential, but I, I'm totally, I'm just, I think that's going to be a tough one. I guess it's only here really to like, I think fight something people really don't want. I kind of feel like that's what this is, the loophole to get out of that doesn't belong here.
Joy, honestly, you guys probably have the most commercial looking um, things going on in the gateway so far. I mean, maybe that will change, but I don't think anybody would have a problem in the future using what you've done over there as part of the character of the gateway, you know, in a complimentary way. You could always go and do something wild, but um, meanwhile.
Right. I, I think of us as this one thing and then we're the, we're the anomaly a little bit, um.
Yeah, it's a nice one.
Thank you. We work hard. Um, all right, I just wanted to point that out, but I, I, I understand why it's here, but I'm good to keep moving. I, and I would, one thing, as everybody knows, I am, I own property in the gateway. I will not be able to vote on the gateway zoning, um. But I would like you guys, if possible, to get to the point where you can vote on this, and I know Virginia, you keep saying that, but we're literally waiting for you guys to finalize this and get it through with plans. And I, I, if we could potentially do one zone quicker than the rest, we would appreciate it. Um, but I'm, I'm just throwing that out there.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm ready. I'm ready to move on.
Yeah, it's approaching gestation period of a large mammal at this point.
Yes, exactly. All right, so everybody's good with that? New definition, character of the area. I think we talked about the next one on my list. Add catering services and food processing. People were okay with that. Because intuitively it's different from light manufacturing. Um, okay, so the last little item is um, the words about the grocery stores, the retail uses, and the pharmacy. And I think that these definitions should meet our needs. I did look a little bit into um, the question that we had last time about whether prepared meals
Yeah.
would count as fresh or fresh frozen food. And I looked at a number of regulations and mostly they talk about perishable food, so. Perishable food is fresh or fresh frozen or refrigerated food that is going to spoil if you don't freeze it or refrigerate it. It's fresh or you can, you have to do something to keep it edible. So I suggest here putting in the word perishable food, which would allow for, for prepared frozen meals or deli sandwiches. Because those are healthy foods, you know, I mean, we're trying to avoid a food desert. So we're trying to avoid unhealthy foods and the foods that were suggested last time by Adam Wood as being possible come under the category of perishable. And so do frozen things. So, and I looked at some other regulations and like I said, mostly they reference perishable food as opposed to just fresh food. Let's face it, we live in Vermont. You can't always have totally fresh food in Vermont because we don't grow things in the winter. So I think it's important to add the frozen and refrigerated um, categories to these definitions.
Right. And you know, Virginia, on the uh, labels that would be attached to, you know, pre, pre-made food, um, pre, pre-prepared food. I'm sure they have to list preservatives if they're in there. And if something does list preservatives, then it's uh, kind of rendered non-perishable to some extent. And maybe that's the, the handle that we can use to differentiate between perishable and foods that just sit on the shelf for a while. Just a thought.
Well, yeah, I mean, a lot of things have preservatives in them, even if they're frozen. And things have preservatives in them sometimes when they're fresh. They have preservatives on them or in them.
Well, there's cer- there's certain preservatives like BHT and things that you don't put in food unless you have to. You know, if you need to have it, have a, a two-month shelf life, you got to put in mutilated hydroxy tylenol, things like that, which is BHT. And those are the, those are the buzzwords that make something not perishable.
Hmm, okay. Anyway, I've suggested a definition for perishable food which is here a little further along on this page. As being edible products for human consumption that are fresh and unprocessed and/or were produced from fresh food and may subsequently be refrigerated or frozen in order to retain their edible quality qualities.
Yeah.
So, anyway, I'm hoping that that works. Jay, looks like you have a comment.
Um, I go to, I travel a lot for work and a lot of times I'll, you know, I'll wind up getting dinner at 10 o'clock at night out of a Walgreens freezer case. Um, with things like frozen hot pockets and Lean Cuisine dinners, they're frozen. You know, if you put it on the counter, they're going to perish. Would those count as perishable or not? And if so, why not?
Well, my understanding of perishable is those would qualify as perishable food. If they're made from fresh, fresh food, what's in the hot pocket? Something.
No one knows.
Okay, well.
Does it have a heartbeat?
Presumably, those are made from fresh food. The frozen dinners that you can buy are made from fresh food. The thing that might not qualify is the Walgreens because we have said if the. If a store has more than 2% of its floor area. Selling food of any kind, it has to sell 25% of its floor area as perishable.
Right. Oh, I'm not asking for Walgreens to come in, it's just, I have such depressing life that a lot of times that's where I wind up eating.
Yeah, and supermarkets, you know, they have frozen meals, but those. Are not chips, you know what I mean? They're not snacks, that's.
They're not Hostess Swinkies.
They're not Hostess Swinkies, right. You could survive for many years eating the frozen food. Prepared meals. I don't know about Walgreens, but out of supermarkets. So, that is my suggestion, and we have those definitions. We're, we're. They're fine with the attorney. We are. Going a little outside the mainstream by saying. If you have more than 2% of your floor area in food, you have to have 25% in perishables. That is a little, you know, that would not allow mainstream, full-size Walgreens probably. To locate here. We're saying, we don't want you to come here. So, you know, that's a little radical, but. The lawyer says it's fine.
We've staked out that turf and, you know, if somebody wants to challenge it, we'll find out, we'll find out more.
Chris, Granda, what do you think?
I don't have a, a opinion about this one.
Okay, so. In general, the strategy has been. In terms of thinking about. Businesses perhaps we don't want to be in our mixed-use districts. Whose name I won't mention because I'm not supposed to, but. We, our strategy has been twofold. One is to add a character of the area statement. Into the features of each of these districts that suggests we're interested in unique. Independent entrepreneurial businesses for our economy here in Richmond. Non-regulatory but suggestive to the DRB. The second way is to put these definitions in that limit to 5,000 square feet. The size. To put in architectural and landscaping standards. And to make these requirements about the food. That will. Tend to discourage or not allow perhaps. The. Bringing in of stores that have a lot of. Processed, very processed food. To create a food desert. So, that is the strategy. That we've got going for us. For the question that you were concerned about, Chris. And I think that is kind of the last set of things that we wanted to talk about, so. Um. Hopefully, if anyone else has any issues or any issues with any of the things we just talked about. This is the time to bring them up because. It's kind of time for us to be done, hopefully, with this.
Yeah, I, I have been thinking about this, uh, uh, a bunch over the last week and. I don't want the perfect to be the enemy of the good here. This is something that we can. Uh, generally accept, uh, you know, hopefully it'll do the trick, um, but I think that it, it does. Provide some degree of protection.
Yeah, and I think that's what we need to aim for, is to start on protection. Doing what we can legally and, um. You know, I think the size limitation is gonna discourage certainly a lot of, a lot of. Businesses that are bigger than that in general. Um, in looking at literature on pharmacies. There is this, you know, I did come across the small format pilot. Projects which are small pharmacies which say they're gonna concentrate, that say what people want is. For us to concentrate on the drugs, the pharmaceuticals. Not have much else, have a helpful pharmacist there who can talk to people. I mean, it sounded like exactly what we would want. And that seemed to me, maybe. People are responding to a need that. Small towns have, I don't know, but it seemed like that would be something that would be acceptable. To come here.
Virginia, one thing that we should probably do though, and in any time that we, um. Have a metric, you know, that, uh, that, that, that defines. This is, uh, is say who gets to, who gets to make the, the determination of compliance, if you will, you know, so. Sale of food of any kind shall devote at least 25 of its gross floor area to the sale pa- perishable food. As, as determined by. The DRB, the planning commission, the select board?
Well, it'll be the DRB, so they'll receive an application for conditional use. And the people will have to provide a floor plan that shows what part is gonna be, you know, they'll have to provide their own information. Just the way they do with traffic studies, they really provide their own information. And if they are found at some point to be in violation of this ordinance. Then there will be consequences from that, you know, I mean, there's not gonna be a lot of enforcement, just like there isn't a lot of enforcement for most of the things that we do. The applicant provides its, his information and, you know. Grocery stores will have that information because we talked to the folks that own our market here and. They were able to provide square footage for everything. You know, they have that information, so. If you're planning to put in a store, when you come to Richmond, you're gonna have to have that information. How much of your floor space is in fresh or frozen food? So. We won't check it, but. They are, you know, they're bound to, by what they say.
And that's part of the review, correct? I mean, that would be, of, of course, they get a review before they build anything, but there's. There's the dialogue that goes with the review, it's written. And, uh, it's enforceable, I think.
Yeah, the DRB will look at their plans and say, oh. Okay, I see that you're, you know. You're having this amount of space that's dedicated to food and how much is frozen or fresh, you know, you have to provide that information. The zoning administrator will have to tell them that this is our zoning. You have to provide this information.
Right.
And that's probably the best that we can do.
Yeah, it's all a matter of record at that point.
We don't have code enforcers, you know, we. Have a minimal amount of enforcement.
Virginia, i- if, uh, if they go through the DRB process, conditional use permit, they get their permit and then later they don't have, you know. 25%, they got 5% or whatever. I would assume that, that the DRB administrator could pull their permit to operate at that point?
The DRB can. Can go through the process of there being a zoning violation. Whatever that process is, which I don't know. Do you know what the process is?
No.
There's a process for zoning violations. You're not allowed to have zoning violations. I'm sure it's in the document. Um. Whatever that process is. Then they're subject to fines or whatever, pull the permit, I don't know.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Yeah.
I would assume, yeah, a claim by anyone of a violation of a zoning permit would. Go back to see what had been discussed and approved, you know, in the, in the, uh, review process. And that's all a matter of record, so. Yeah.
Yeah, and you know. We talked to Revy about this a lot when, because it, before he left, he was the one who helped to work on this, but. He said, you know, there are many, many things in the zoning ordinance. That. Could be violated by someone who has a permit, and they do do some amount of enforcement. The zoning administrator is required to do some amount of enforcement of the zoning condition, you know, the conditions that were placed on a permit. Under conditional use, you can have a lot of different kinds of. Conditions placed about landscaping and. You know, all kinds of things that, um. Our zoning administrator is responsible for. So.
And I think any citizen could bring up. A complaint, uh, which, you know, informally or formally, and then it would go to the zoning administrator and on from there. Is that, is that correct, Virginia? I mean, it's, we're all kind of enforcers in a sense.
Well, that's where some of the complaints come from, is the neighbors.
Right.
Okay, well, you didn't have a permit for that outdoor storage. Or whatever. Uh, you know, what's the deal? If it's a problem, it will. Generally filter.
Right, there'll be more than one person complaining, yeah.
Yeah, so, anyway. Trish. You must be Trish Healy, right?
Yes, I just unmuted, yes, um. So I would just like to, my husband direct sent a letter. To the planning commission. I don't know if, Virginia, if you received it or not. He sent it, um. Looks like it was yesterday and he's not able to attend the meeting tonight. He's actually. Coaching my son's hockey practice, but I would just like to, just like to read a couple segments of it.
Okay, yes, I don't think we got it that yet.
Okay, I think it was probably sent via email, but, um, so I just wanna highlight a few items in his. Um, in this, in this letter, and this is all strictly. Um, you know, really, we're looking at kind of village, well, he actually, I'll just, I'll just read through this and that'll make it easier. Um, instead of kind of paraphrasing it. So, dear Richmond Planning Commission members, thank you for your time and effort you've put into proposing changes to modify Richmond's zoning regulations. To help alleviate the housing shortage in Vermont. While I'm not able to make the meeting, um. I'd like to offer the following specific suggestions that I hope you'll consider. Lot size and setbacks. I agree that a reduction in lot size is a good idea as it provides for more density in a very predictable manner. However, I believe we'd be better served to reduce from one-third. To quarter-acre lots instead of 10,000 square feet. Additionally, I believe all rear. And side of property setbacks, including for auxiliary dwellings, should be 10 feet. Similar to what Heinsberg and Essex Junction use. Moreover, the front setback for all structures should, in my opinion, absolutely be maintained at 20 feet. This will avoid changing the character of Richmond's village to a more urban feel, especially given the three-story. 35-foot building allowance. These minimum setbacks, setback requirements would also make sure that our zoning regulations meet the original purpose of avoiding. Neighbor conflict. I'd like to say, we are, you know, this letter that my husband wrote, we're, we're, we're talking about, um. The Village Residential Commercial District, um, not specific to the gateway, just to, just to, as a disclaimer. Um, just to be very specific. Uh, the next area is the lot coverage. Changing the lot coverage from 40% to 60%. Exactly flips the ratio of green verse build. As a longtime resident of the village, I believe our children deserve open land spaces. Birds and pollinators deserve habitat. And village rela- residents are equally entitled to open space. And the New England village that our town plan describes and they invested in. Your proposed change is too dramatic, especially in combination with proposed lot size changes. And should be tempered to 50/50 at most. The next area, the next kind of agenda area is trip ends. Doubling the allowable trip ends. After which a traffic impact study is required is a rather extreme change to this zoning requirement and it seems unnecessary. Rather, Richmond should continue to use its current standards and then perhaps allow. The administrative officer or DRB to allow additional trip ends after a TIS. Uh, traffic impact study is performed. This simply provides appropriate review of any significant impact to our local traffic. In short, while I believe the planning commission has. Goals, I feel you're currently taking too aggressive an approach. Pulling hard on every string, if you will, which unnecessarily risks unraveling. The fabric of our village character. Rather, I think a more incremental approach would be more prudent. And I hope you'll consider tempering your proposed zoning amendments. To garner more universal support. Sincerely, David Healy. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Trish. So, I would. Like to just comment on one item that Trish mentioned. Which is the. Question of how we refer to lot size. Um, so. In our zoning, in our whole zoning up until now, we have talked about acres. Like. One, you know, one acre, one half acre, one quarter acre. And so what we originally started out with this project. Was going from one-third of an acre to one-quarter acre. As they mentioned, the Healy's mentioned. We then. Revy, our planner. Persuaded us that a more current approach. Is talking about square footage, so a quarter of an acre becomes approximately 10,000 square feet. So, I did investigate this question. And talked to the people at regional planning. And also looked at. The, um, references that they suggested, which is Heinsberg. Both Heinsberg and Essex. And the strategy is actually, if it's for areas where it's under. An acre, where the minimum lot size is under an acre. So. This, if we have a quarter of an acre, that counts. Then it's listed in square footage. That's the way it's currently done, so. What Revy failed to mention to us when we switched over to the square footage. Is that it's mostly for areas for districts in which the lot size is smaller than an acre. If you want to bring up that document that you made.
Yeah.
So I printed out a couple of documents, one from Heinsberg and one from Essex. That shows how this is done. You could hit on the Heinsberg one. And for some reason, this is interest, this is, this is the way planners are interested in doing this currently. So here's a page from the Heinsberg zoning regulations. So in the Ag District, actually, if you look down the first column, minimum lot size for all their different districts. For the Ag District, they actually go with .5 acres, and that's sort of another way that. It's done is that if it's an outlying district, not in the center of town, they talk about acres. If it's in the town, they talk about square feet. So you look down, they're Rural Residential 1. It's a three-acre or a one-acre lot minimum. Rural, uh, Residential 2, they call it .5 acres. You come down to the village. And they talk about 6,000 square feet. Village, their other village, the northwest part of the village, 6,000 square feet, they go down. So. So, it's a mixed, it's like, alright, so in our zoning, when we come to look at the Ag Res District. We can still talk about it in acres, when you have. Districts where the lot size is small, smaller than one acre. Then people tend to go with the square footage. And I asked the people at regional planning, is this not confusing to have both systems going at the same time? And they said, no, that is the way the planners want to do it. The other. Um, towns that are small, like Bolton and Huntington, I looked at their zoning, they all still talk about acres. You know, they just talk about acres wherever they are, but that's because mostly there weren't any lots that were smaller than one acre. Now that we're going to districts that have lots that are smaller than one acre. This seems to be the way that people are doing it, you could put up the other one, the Essex one. So that was from Heinsberg, the one from Essex. Is kind of similar, I just printed out their page. Oh, it's page whatever. Anyway, it's this, it's the same kind of thing, if it's big acreage over one, then they put it as acres. Is it page? Eighteen, I think. Page eighteen, yep, so, um. So. Here's theirs, I don't know if you can make it bigger, but you read it across the top here, their districts are listed across the top. The minimum is, um. You know, so they talk about it in square feet, if it's twenty thousand square feet, which is like half an acre, thirty thousand, seven, twenty. They do the same kind of thing, if it's, um. If it's there's larger. Well, I guess they're mainly, they mainly do it all in square feet. I thought they had some that were. In acres. So anyway, so that's the situation, the situation there, and that, so the reason that Revy recommended it to us is because that's the way it's done in planning circles. Is with the smaller size districts, they go to square feet. Whether that's, you know. What's best, I don't really have any experience with whether it's best to do it this way, whether we can. You know, we could. Go back to the old way of doing it and change it, change our. Our ten thousand square feet to a quarter of an acre, it seems like. If this is the way planners are doing it, that's fine, the developers will be familiar with it from developing in these other places. Um. Um, the. Zoning Administrator Tyler. Wished that we would do it all one way or another, so. I, I don't know, I, I kind of. Wanted to leave it the way it was, just because we had already done it that way, but. I'm open to suggestions, Lisa.
Um, Virginia, tell me if I'm wrong, but I think, you know, in addition to lot size, minimum lot size requirements and all that. Don't we have to have the applicant inscribe a circle of twenty-five foot diameter? On their lot to, to avoid having little parcels, which I think maybe Trish is worried about. That are sc- scrawny, you know, weird shaped, cobbled together pieces of land that nobody had any other use for. I think the intention was to be able to show that something is a viable shape of lot. In addition to being.
We do have that in there. My understanding of what Trish read out is that. Ten thousand square feet is a little bit less than a quarter of an acre, so we're actually going from a third of an acre. To a little bit less than a quarter of an acre, uh, so it's even more of a change than going to a quarter of an acre.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Um. Chris. Granda.
Um, Virginia, at least two of us have a hard stop at nine tonight, you're going to lose a quorum.
Alright, what do you people want to do? Do you want to talk more about this or what?
I, I wouldn't mind a hard stop at nine, I've got a child going away for quite some time, I wouldn't mind spending some time with them.
Yes, are people ready to vote on this or not?
I am.
Joy, you'll be voting on the one packet, we're going to do them in two separate packets.
Right.
Chris. Are you going, ready to vote on this or no?
I guess I am.
Chris Cole, I mean, the people want to talk about it further or?
I'm ready to vote.
Likewise.
Okay, is anybody not ready to vote? Chris Granda, you could put your hand down so that we're not confused as to. Whether you are or aren't. Okay, so I'm not hearing anyone saying they're not ready to vote. With the few amendments that we're going to make as we have discussed tonight. So, removing the word junk, for instance, and. Putting that outdoor storage in. Um, if anybody would like to make the motion, okay, you can bring back up the meeting memo.
Yep.
With the, or, no, it's not the memo, it's the. Um. What the package contains. The meeting package contains. So. Here are the motions. And you can add. As amended with tonight's date. To the motion, we have the maps of the two districts that are in the packet, we have the bylaw amendments that are the same. And we have the markup of the complete zoning ordinance according to. The document Gateway and Village RC and associated amendments, which is the clean copy. So I've done the markup of the whole document. And so if somebody would like to make the motion. It is on the screen.
Chris Cole, I think you're on mute, if you're letting it rip.
I was letting it rip, Dan, thank you. Uh, I, Chris Cole, move to approve the following amendments to the Richmond zoning regulations and the relevant bylaw amendment report. And send them to the select board for their review process, sections two-point-five-point-two, three-point-one-point-one, three-point-one-point-two. Three-point-two-point-one, three-point-two-point-two, three-point-four, three-point-five-point-one, three-point-five-point-two, three-point-six-point-one. Three-point-six-point-two, three-point-seven-point-one, three-point-seven-point-two, three-point-eight-point-one, three-point-eight-point-two, three-point-nine-point-one, three-point-nine-point-two. Three-point-ten-point-one, three-point-ten-point-two, four-point-five, five-point-five, six-point-one-two, six-point-one-three, and seven. Minor references related to the district name change have been amended in the following additional sections table of contents, two-point-one. Five-point-one, point-three, five-point-seven-point-four, five-point-twelve-point-two, and index.
And that was five-point-seven-point-three. Not five-point-one-point-three, at the end there.
Thank you for that friendly amendment.
You could add that. With, as amended on this date, February first. Because we may, we will make a couple of amendments.
Friendly amendment is accepted.
Okay.
Wow.
Um, and this, that motion. Is the gateway. Motion, basically. So that is one that. Um, Joy wishes to recuse herself from voting on. Is that correct, Joy?
Absolutely.
Joy, are you going to abstain?
I, I don't know what I'm supposed to do, you guys tell me. Abstain?
You recuse yourself, yep.
No voting.
I, I recuse myself from this vote.
Okay. And was there a second to this motion?
Second.
Lisa and Chris, alright, all in favor of. The following motion, number one up there, as amended on this date, should say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
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 Are there any no votes or abstentions? Alright, so that motion passes and we will send that on to the board. So now. In the follow-up to our other public hearing, we need to have another motion, which is motion number two, that Joy is also able to vote on. Would somebody like to make that motion?
Can I ask a clarifying question before the motion, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Do we have an official zoning map?
Um. Yes, yeah, we have our maps, we have the maps of the two districts that are. Blown up parts of the official zoning map. Are you asking if we currently have a zoning map or if we have a new zoning map?
I'm asking whether we have an official zoning map.
Currently, in our zoning.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes, we do.
So that's different than a regulatory zoning map, though.
No.
Well, I, the reason why I'm asking is because we had been talking with Revy. For the last two years about Revy's desire to create an official zoning map, which led me to believe that we didn't have one.
I thought he wanted an official map, which is a little bit different.
That's different, an official map, this is an official zoning.
Right, the, the official map includes transportation corridors and a lot of other things too, you know, it should show zoning boundaries, yeah.
Thank you, Lisa.
Different animal.
Thank you for the clarification. Are you ready for a motion, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I, Chris Cole, move to approve the following amendments to the Richmond zoning regulations, the relevant bylaw amendment report and send them to the select board for the review process. Section three-point-three and the revised official zoning map and its legend.
I'll second.
Seconded by Lisa? Alright, any discussion on that motion? All in favor should signify by saying aye or raising your hand.
Aye.
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 And I need to abstain from this too, Virginia?
Oh, this one you can vote on, please.
Okay, aye.
Thank you.
Chris, your diction is wonderful, perfect.
Thank you. It's only because it's nine oh five.
Are there any no votes or abstentions? Okay, just to make sure we got everybody. Hearing none, that passes as well, and we will. Send all of these things to the select board, including a letter that I'm going to write that describes all these just. These changes that we've made in a way that is fairly straightforward for them to not have to really. Go into it as deeply as we have been into it, though.
Word of advice, just, just keep the letter shorter than the zoning regulations.
Well, yeah, yep, that's going to be the trick, so.
Virginia, thank, Virginia, thank you, before you, you call the meeting, uh. Thank you very much for all the work that you have been putting into this particular zoning effort, especially without the benefit of having a planner, I know it's a. It's huge task, so I just wanted to acknowledge the hard work that you have been putting in on behalf of the town, so thank you.
And we all second.
Yes, we all do, thank you, Virginia. Thank you, great, alright, well, this is excellent, thank you all for your work as well and. Next meeting, we'll talk about what we want to do next. Okay. So.
Thank you.
To adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, and we can talk about our party at the Stone Corral at some point. For having finished something, I'm going to let Revy know, by the way, that we have moved it on, he will be thrilled, so, anyway.
A lot of work.
Thanks so much.
A lot of work there.
Yep.
Thanks, y'all.
Yeah, see you next time, it'll be the fifteenth of this month. Okay.